Subscription is affiliated with your site. I think doing something like that is going to be a lot more cost effective than trying to encompass that entire thing. What I was gonna look at here real quick is, uh, let's, let's pull these off again. And look at subscription. So the subscription there, which we're talking, you know, eleven thousand dollars or so, and then we did that. Subscription fifteen thousand. So, you know, the CMS integration, this one right here, this part of it is probably, let's just see. Yeah, that's really just a framework for connecting. So all the security and everything that's kind of involved there. So that is probably not going to change much. But this one. Yeah, this one right here is probably the one that is going to, yeah, in these two combined. You're probably potentially gonna cut that down to, you know, you've got almost three weeks, two weeks of work right there. It's probably gonna be cut down to about a week. So you're gonna save thirty percent, thirty-three percent or so on that one. But to your point, I mean, if you want me to go through and kind of identify cost savings or move things from one place to the next.
He's already there.
Hello, everybody. This is Dennis. Just to let you know that we are live on Vimeo anticipating, starting at 5:30. And are we, I assume that we're still waiting on some others to join in?
Yes, we are, Dennis.
And how are you this evening, Ms. Burke?
I am ready for tomorrow.
Yes, say, exactly, exactly. Okay, Ms. Mrs. Matchit, how are you?
Oh, how are you doing?
Wonderful, wonderful. Ready to start another school year.
Rachel, which, are you gonna control the screen? No, there's only the two pages. The last one. But I will get started. Then we'll outline the meeting. And then we go through. Take it through.
Actually, what am I?
Let's see, one, two, three, four board being, four board members. All right, go. Oh, oh, that is, I'm sorry. Sure we can't count that?
You cannot.
We fell for seeing you twice.
I saw, I'm just counting the tiles.
That was hilarious, David. I love that. That was great.
Five o'clock somewhere.
We now have four.
Hello.
Hi, Julie.
How are you?
Thank you for taking my not-so-subtle hint, Julie.
I said, I was telling you, I said, well, I was gonna wait till a little bit closer to 5:30 to call in, but I think I better call in now so that Rachel feels better. So I'm in my car. If you guys don't mind, so it could only take fifteen minutes and.
Good evening again, everyone. Again, this is Dennis. Welcome to tonight's work session of the MSD Warren School Board. Just to let you guys know that we are live on Vimeo and we're about five minutes out for the official start of the meeting.
Hey, Rachel.
Yes?
Who is our fourth?
Terri's here, Lynn's here, I'm here, and you're here.
Okay.
You're on the phone, so you can't see anyone. That's right.
Well, I, I can see you and I saw Terry at one point, but I didn't see Lynn. I wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
You hear me, Terry?
Yes, Randy. So now you are our fifth board member today. Thank you.
You're on my big, you're on the big screen here.
Oh, I don't wanna be there.
You look good.
Well, thank you, but.
Now, I look.
I don't like big screens.
I looked at, watched Rachel talk today and Tim and that board member looked like they put hair on my, top of my head there. I don't know who would have done that. Linda, were you in charge of that, Lynn?
You know, Randy, I'm just always thinking about you.
Thank you. I know you are. But seriously, it looked like, it looked like it was even dark brown. It was like, if you look at it, you'll see what I mean on that welcome back video today. But everybody's doing all right?
Well, hello, Randy.
Gloria, how are you?
All right.
You look pleasant.
Everybody else, how you doing?
Good. You look good, pleasant.
Thank you. You too. I don't see anybody else. Let me see if I can. Uh, oh, there, everybody. Okay. Hello, everyone. Getting better at this.
They must be mute, muted.
They must be muted because they can't.
Oh, yeah, they are. See, they're.
I just waved at everybody.
Let me, you're muted, you're muted.
We've got about two minutes, one minute now, everyone. And we'll start right at 5:30.
David, how you doing?
I'm great, Randy. How are you?
Too bad about John. What was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone, it's 5:30. So in the interest of time, I'm gonna call meeting to order. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to stand. Dennis, when you get a chance, I need my screen sharing turned on.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Base of America and to the Republic. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dennis, I don't know if you can hear me, but I need screen sharing turned on, please. Okay, so I guess everyone's just going to have to pull up board docs until we get that, but I'm going to go in and hand this over to David Holt.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you for your time this evening. We wanted to take some time, we received bids on July 16th. And this is a large project at the high schools, you know, there are nine different bid packages that we'll be looking at tonight. And just as a reminder, this is phase one at the high school. So a lot of this is the exterior work, site work, drainage work, a reconfiguration of the bus lot, parking lot on Lot 5 for a car rider type of drop off. And then some new entrances over at door 18 and 21 on the west side of the building, as well as expanding the Hall of Fame between the competition gym and the performing arts center. So it's a lot of outside work. And this is the first of probably at least three phases that we'll be doing in the high school for the next three to five years. So this evening, we are bringing to you a recommendation to approve nine different contractors. The first page, if you have it on board docs, will be kind of the overview of the bid winners and the ones that we are recommending for general trades, asphalt, roofing, drywall metal studs, storefront and entrances, floor coverings, painting, plumbing, mechanical, fire protection, and then electrical. So I'll go through these one at a time, kind of explain to you the bids. And if you have any questions, you know, go ahead and stop me at any point. But bid package one was general trades. We are recommending maybe, we had actual five bids that were placed for the general trades. And this is the largest, most comprehensive bid package. Bid package two was for asphalt. We are recommending the Harding Group. We had three different bids coming in. Bid package three was for roofing. We had two bids with Brown's Roofing coming in as the low bid. Bid package four, which is drywall, metal studs, kind of finish work and ceilings. Performance contracting was low bid that we are recommending there. Bid package five was entrances, aluminum storefronts, kind of some new entryway area. And we are recommending quiche glass. Bid package six is floor coverings. I'm sorry, bid package five, there were two, two good bids there. Bid package six, floor coverings, we are recommending Blakely's Corporation. There were three good, different bids there. Bid package seven, which is the painting contract. We only actually had one bid and it's been difficult to find vendors on the painting. As you remember at Lowell, we, we struggled, there's just a lot of jobs out there and there are a lot of contractors. We are going to ask that you approve the bid for Anthony Anderson because the bid came in significantly below our initial estimate. So we believe it's a good bid. Package eight is for mechanical plumbing, fire protection. We are recommending for our mechanical, there were five actual bids for that project. And then the last is bid package nine, electrical, which is, we are recommending ATEC. And we had four different bids there. I don't want to, just going to go through there. Overall, we had also three alternate, alternate bids that we placed in this project. We are asking you to approve those as well. We did that, just not knowing in this bid climate, what kind of bids we would be getting back during this kind of re-entry back into construction phases. So we had those as alternates, just in case our bids came in higher than what we actually could afford. Unfortunately, this bid climate was exceptional. And totaled with the three alternates, we are looking at $10,790,000. Our estimate going into this was around 13 million. So we are extremely pleased with the aggressive nature. And I, I have to say, you know, a lot of that is an excellent design package that CSO put together. And then really a lot of hard work from our construction manager, with Skilman Group going out there and having pre-bid meetings, talking to contractors and making sure we had a lot of, a lot of bids. And I'm really pleased to have this coming in at about 20% below cost estimate. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I do want to point out, because it is something that we are going to be tracking and hopefully the next time that we can do a formal kind of presentation on our projects. I want to, I really want to talk about our process with going through and identifying minority, MBE WB bidders. Our electrical contractor that we are recommending, he was 100% MBE contractor. And then painting, Anthony Anderson Corporation is 100% WBE. So we're thrilled to have those because we are really trying to identify additional contractors and bringing in diverse groups. And we'll, hopefully, we're going to put together a package for you the next time we can get in front of the board to talk about that from the Lowell and the high school. And then also Victor and Tony can talk to you about their process of going out there and trying to recruit additional vendors. With that, we are making the recommendation of those nine bid packages and would be happy to answer any questions.
David, can you hear me David?
I think.
When you walked in, you sort of faded out and started, sounded robotic. And I couldn't understand because that was going to be my question when you were talking about minority contractors. I think that you said that you did, out of this group, there were two African American? Are there two African American?
One, one, one minority business, one women owned business of the nine.
When you say minority, is that African American?
They, actually, I do not know specifically what the minority is. It's just they are, they have a certificate as an MBE vendor, which means minority. So we do, we aren't allowed to actually ask what race that is.
Okay, because you know what, that, you know, because when we say minority, you know, that could encounter, you know, women or, you know, different ones. But specifically, I wanted to know, are we, out of all these bids, do we have black contractors so that they can give back to this African American community? Because of, you know, our percentage of African American students in the district. I just was hoping that we could have some black vendors so that they could represent the community and provide services for the, you know, the community. So that's why I was asking you, out of all of these groups, do you know whether any of them are black contractors? Because you know, they, go on.
I do, I don't know specifically what the minority race is that ATEC is. I, we can ask Skilman, Victor and Tony to research that for you to find out what that is. They are listed on their MBE certificate as 100% minority. They don't list what race that is.
And on the Anderson Company or the Anderson Corporation, that's a woman owned business.
Correct, correct.
David, we're happy to find that out and report back to you, unless Tony knows that off the top of his head.
Tony, do you know?
I do not know.
We'll find out. I wanted to add too, if this is of an interest to the board, ATEC is also a veteran owned business and what's labeled as a disabled business enterprise, which tells me that they are a kind of a newer business. I don't want to articulate that wrong, but it, but they meet several criteria that are registered under that. So we'd be happy to get a little more detail. I'm sure the company would love to share that with the board.
Well, I would appreciate if you guys could find that out. You know, because minority can stand for so many things. But my concern is that if we have all of these particular groups and all of this money being shared with these groups and our population, you know, of African American students is very high. And it would be a shame if none of these contractors were black contractors where we would be able to show that we are, you know, sharing with that population of, of, of students in order for them to, you know, give back to the community in which they live.
I agree. And we'll, and we'll do some research on that and get that answer specifically for you Gloria.
Well, if we vote on this tonight though, we're voting on these particular ones. So if none of them are black owned, you know, contractors, then how can we resolve that or how can we address that issue?
David did say that at a future meeting, he was going to discuss and have Tony and Victor present on how they seek minority and black owned businesses.
Yeah, I heard him, I heard him say that, but you know, that doesn't address what we're looking at right now. You know, because in this whole process of remodeling our buildings, I don't see any black contractors doing anything. And that's a concern of mine. I represent the African American community. And I don't see that they're being a part of this renovation process for Warren Township Schools. And that, that's, that's troubling right there. Because there should be at least one contractor out of everything that's being done in Warren.
Well Gloria, I will tell you that I have the, I have all the bids here and we do not have any 100% minority contractors we aren't selecting. So when they are, when they have an MBE certificate, we, I mean, as far as understanding black owned, I don't know Victor, Tony, if there is a specific designation for that, that we would be able to ask in the process. The city of Indianapolis has a designation either MBE, which would be minority, or WBE, which is women owned, that they have to answer. But I don't know that there's anything that we can, I think we can do some research to identify whether or not we can ask the question if they're 100% black owned.
Even if it's, you know, not 100%, you know, if they are, you know, a black owned business and they have, you know, several different minorities working for them. But I'm just saying that, you know, at some point in time, that's why we have the problems that we have in our society today. Because people want to say minority and then they get all other minority groups and they leave out the black. So now we need to start focusing on, when you say minority, you know, it's okay that you have women. You're including women. And you know what? If we left out certain different groups and they weren't a part of anything, they would feel left out also. But we try to include every other group. And we're not addressing this problem that we have with the black community.
So can I say something?
The black community wants to see a change. We want to be included in some of these things. We're not included.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I, I think we were skirting on the edge of the law a little bit. I think we have to make sure we're doing what is correct by the law and, and our bidding procedures that are required of us as a state entity. And David knows those much better than I do. And I'm sure he's going to make sure he follows those and will do what he can to, to get you your information. But I'm not sure, I don't know, David, correct me, can that be done before we, we bid on something? I would think we could check that out after. And, and if we know it's a minority owned and there, there still has to be this, this check and checkout procedure to make sure we're doing that right.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can talk to our counsel to figure out what questions we can and we can't ask in a pre-bid. And I think we can probably include those questions and ask. I'm not sure that you can preclude anyone for not selecting on that basis though. So I mean, I, we'll have to do more research with, with bond counsel and legal counsel on the selection of vendors.
Yeah, because I, I understand where you're going from Gloria, but I don't want to break the law as we're doing it.
Well, you know what, at some point in time, we have to address, if you look at the law, that means equality for all. If we just want to look at the total law, it should be equality for all. And that's, that's the only way we're going to break this systemic, you know, racism problem that's going on. You hear the black community is very, very upset because of all of these things. And then they want to say, oh, you know, we have to go by the law. No, the law says equality for all. So.
It does, it does. It does, but there's very specific things that we have to abide by when we do bidding. And, and part of that deals with that aspect of it. So, and then also, I think we need to have a, we're getting more into the discussion realm. So I think we probably need to have a motion.
No, I think it's important that we discuss this because when we have a motion, all you're going to do is, is approve it. But I think that, you know, we don't, wait a minute.
Debate occurs after a motion's been made.
What?
Debate occurs after an emotion has been made.
Okay, but this is not really a debate. This is like questions and concerns. What I'm saying to David Holt is we have nine vendors. Out of those nine vendors, I'm just saying that I represent the black African American community. And as a representative of our community, our community is not very happy with the fact that none of these vendors come from, you know, an African American. All the money is being sent out to other cultures and other groups. And we represent a large portion of Warren. And none of this money is going back into our black community and supporting our black businesses? That's a concern. And I don't want Warren to have the reputation of not supporting black businesses. And that's what it seems like right now. And when you approve this, that's saying, okay, we're going to move forward with all these projects. And again, you guys are left out. That's very disappointing. And I'm sorry that I have to speak out on that, but I do represent our culture and our community. And they're not very happy with being left out. That's why we having all these problems now.
Gloria.
When you, when you do this, I want you to think about that. Here again, we're left out.
Gloria. But we're trying to save money so when you go to bids, everybody applies who wants to bid on it. You can't get your pool and all you know is that it's a minority group. But we take the best price that we can get. And we're lucky that we have some minority groups that have bidded low enough for this, for us to be tax conservative or dollar conservative with our bills.
I understand that, but where do you, where do you draw the line where you find a black owned business? You know what, that can be a part of this low bid. I'm pretty sure there's some out there.
Well, Gloria, but if, we haven't seen every single, we have all the contractors who made the bids and we take the lowest one. If we wanted to, we could siphon out and look at all those contractors. But then we would be kind of like breaking the law or breaking, if I'm correct, we'll be breaking the law by just picking on.
That's what, that's just another loophole to our community. That's just another slap in the face.
It's not meant to be a subject.
Okay guys.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, wait a minute, let me say.
No, Terry's made a motion, there's a motion on the floor, is there?
I will second it, I will second it.
You second it. That means we're at discussion Gloria.
Okay.
I, I do have a question I want to ask for David. Were there any minority owned bids that we did not accept?
The only one we did not accept was also in the electrical, which is what ATEC is 100% minority owned. We had another vendor who was partially owned minority, but again, I don't know the race because that's not a question we can ask. But other than that, no. So we had, we had a lot of other women owned businesses who were not the low bid, but not on minority.
But for minority owned businesses, we took the ones that we have.
Right, correct.
Okay, so David, you know, maybe. Okay, so David, you know, maybe, you know, I'm not sure this was a deliberate thing. Don't, I don't want anyone to get me wrong. I feel that it wasn't a deliberate thing. But we need to start focusing on how certain groups feel. You guys are not understanding how we feel in our African American community. I know without you being African American, maybe you don't understand, but walk in my shoes. Try to at least try to think and walk in my shoes and try to imagine how we feel. So here we are with a large number of African American students and none of the business, none of the resources is going to any African American, black. And when we say minority, oh yeah, we can always fill it with other minorities. We can always fill the shoes with women. But here again, when you hear people saying black lives matter, this is what they're saying. We matter. Include us. We matter. What is it gonna take for people to understand that? That we matter. We matter as we want to be part of the finances in the schools, being part. Do you know that the African American community would feel so good if they had a, a black business to participate in this? And then their kids can say, oh, guess what? This business did this when they walked past the paint or the walls or the construction.
Gloria, I understand that, but we've accepted all of the minority bids. Like, not accepted cuz we've not voted to accept bids. But all of the contractors that were minority owned that put in bids were accepted. So there's no minority owned business that gave us a bid, other than the other electrical bid, because there were two for electrical. That wasn't.
We don't know.
There was a minority owned business and then we chose a different vendor. All of the vendors that were minority certified that came in, again, other than the second electrical, cuz there were two and for electrical, were chosen.
Okay, so here we go back with the excuse again. We can't find minority teachers. We can't find minority, we can't find minority businesses now to try to work in the schools is always an excuse. I'm just saying, that's just totally unacceptable. And I'm so sorry that you see that, you know, I sound upset over this. As a matter of fact, I'm really teary eyed over this. I am so tired of people not understanding that you guys are hurting the black community. We feel left out. We want to be a part. We're tired of hearing, oh, we have minority business, but what about the black minority? Okay, we want to be a part. This is what is so hurting. You guys don't understand. I'm not angry. I'm hurt. Because we constantly get left out all the time. And our black community is saying we matter. It matters. It really matters that we want to be a part. But all we keep hearing is, oh, this excuse, that excuse, that excuse, why we're not a part. And that is so sad, very sad. And I, we don't know what it's going to take to try to make a change. But a change has got to come. Because our community is suffering because we don't see any progress being made. And that's all that I'm saying. That it would be nice for a change to see that the black businesses are a part, that we are a part. And we can be proud. That's all that I'm saying here. And I'm done. I, you know, I don't have anything else to say, but I'm just want you to know that it's just hurting. I'm representing everyone in my community. And if they were speaking right now, they would say the same thing. So I, 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 maybe you don't understand. I don't know.
David, David, is there any way, and I don't know, is there any way when we put out for RFPs that we can say, you know, that we welcome minority businesses to apply? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, Victor, do you want to answer that? What your process is?
I, I apologize for not doing a better job of communicating that, especially to Mrs. Williams, because we really take this very seriously. We want to encourage black businesses to bid our projects. And we work very hard to communicate out into the community. We have had partnerships with the city of Indianapolis and organizations like the Indianapolis Construction Roundtable to specifically reach out to minority businesses, other, what we call XBE, those, those various businesses. And we have done that on, on both of your projects. It, it is, unfortunately, we do our very best to go out and communicate to those businesses. But because of, of it being public bidding, we, we can all, we can, we can take the horse to water, but we can't make them drink, right? And so we have had some participation that we're gonna share in a future board meeting with you. But we have not been able to get the interest in your projects like I know you want to have. And we're gonna continue to work very hard to increase that. And we'll work on every one of our bids to communicate to that community and use the organizations that they're tapped into. And unfortunately, in this situation, we, we don't have the kind of level of participation I know you want. And, and I just want to tell you that, Skilman, we very much want to have that. We want to encourage those businesses to be part of our projects. As an organization, it's a goal of ours and we've had great success records. And I hope you'll give us a chance to, to do better and to communicate the kind of things that we're doing to represent you out in the construction community. So you have our commitment to do, we'll, we'll continue to try hard and we're gonna try to do better. So you're happy with the kind of participation.
Okay. And then I also, I want to verify, make clear or just make sure we're all on the same page. When you get these bids, if you go out and you encourage minority participation and, and bid and everybody bids, then what is the process for picking? Because I know we've got to go with a low bid. But I also know that there's a certain amount of quality that's, that's in there as well and what we want. And we're asking, can you tell us a little bit about that just real quick? Cuz I know you're gonna do it at a later time. If you could just tell us how that works, because I don't want anybody leaving or thinking that if we get all these minority businesses to apply, that they will be picked. Because I don't think that's the way, and I could be wrong. I don't think that's the way it works because of the public aspect of it and bidding.
That, that is correct in that we still fall within the state statute of the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And that is the, the, that is the standard. There are, there have been communities and there are, you know, municipalities that will establish goals and then use those, communicate those goals out. But there, there is lots of legal parameters there that I, I would prefer you tap into your legal counsel to, to help set those parameters. In our experience, the most effective way is to work the streets and communicate out to those organizations and represent that, that is a goal and that is a something that you want to see achieved here at Warren Township. We have been doing that. There, there are maybe some thing, other things that we could do. I would ask the board that, you know, we may tap into you to conduct to some additional bidding events that, that just help to represent that community. In terms of Mrs. Williams' specific concern about black or African American businesses, that is not a documentation that we can specifically target or, or document. The, the, the city and the, and the state do establish minimum criteria for minority, MBE. And those are through those, through the state and the city. Only through anecdotal information can we get that additional layer of information for you. But we're happy to do that. And I think we have a lot of general knowledge about those contractors. But we can't necessarily specifically list that percentage specific to black. It, it is not a established criteria for that. Only MBE is established by the state and the city.
And I want to add one other thing. You know what? It seems as though if you get someone that's a, a black African American to help you as far as recruiting black owned businesses to do some of this work, you know, we would be able to suggest several businesses and with, within the low bidding, and they are excellent workers. You know, so it's about who's looking and where you're looking. So that's why I said it, it's good for you to have someone or ask an African American to assist you when you are in the process of doing this.
And that's something we want to share with the Mrs. Williams. We do have partners in the industry, specific black owned businesses that actually we have mentored over the years that are construction managers that are, we've developed relationships with. So yes, we are tapping into that as well.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote.
Well, can I say something?
Sorry, Randy.
That's, I'm here. With the low base bids that you said, that was one of my questions. So it's entirely the lowest base bid. Is it also proximity to Warren Township or Indianapolis on these accepted, if we accept them, these bidders? Are they, all of them pretty local right here within the city?
They're all, they're all central Indiana. Yes.
Central Indiana?
Yeah. I think almost all of them are based in Indianapolis.
Yeah, I think Keish Glass is, is not a central Indiana contractor. I believe they're out of Jasper.
That's correct.
We had two glass bids. The other one was Hoosier Glass, who's looking at the bid tab, was quite a bit more there, almost a hundred thousand dollars higher. They're located in Hamilton County.
That was a good question, Randy, because, you know, seeing if we are pulling people from the community. And there again, you know, we don't have representation.
But Gloria, I want to make sure you realize that there's a specific process that we have to follow. And that we, we follow it and, and we have to by law. So.
Okay, you know what? I understand what you're saying, Julie, but it's always, I mean, you can always find excuses for leaving out a group of people.
Well, I don't want to go to jail, so.
That's what it sounds like to me. You know, you keep saying, oh, there's law, there's guidelines. You can always.
They're not guideline, they're not guidelines. It's the law and, and.
Yeah, okay.
And we could get in a lot of trouble. Our, our district could get in a lot of trouble by not following the law.
The law says equality too. If someone wanted to say, well, Warren Township is discriminating because they never had any blacks doing, you know, any of these things, then they could, they could pose a, a problem with that, you know? So what I'm saying to you is that I understand the law. But where do you draw the line that you have to include a culture that reflects your school system? Okay, so if you use the law to exclude them, that's not good. You're using the law wrong. The laws state equality for all. And that's what Warren represents, equality for all. And that's not just inside the schools, but it's what we do with the schools. It's all of us together. So if we see that we are lopsided, then it's our responsibility to make sure that we level the plane. And right now, the plane is not leveled. It's lopsided. So this is all that I'm saying, that we have to make sure that it's equality for all.
Okay. Thank you Gloria. Thank you Julia, Randy, Terry, Lynn. Julie, I know that you are outside. Are you able to call a vote or do you want me to do it?
I've got paper and I'm ready.
Okay, then let's call the vote.
Terry.
Yay.
Rachel.
Yay.
Lynn.
Yay.
Randy.
Yes.
Gloria.
Nay.
And I'm a yes. So it passes five to one.
Thank you everyone for your time this evening, Tony and Victor particularly. We do look forward to having you at a later board meetings that we can continue discussions more. I think it was a good discussion, at least a start. We need to obviously have more of it and we will. And with that, thank you everyone for your time.
Victor, I'm glad that you said that you're gonna start trying to focus on that a little bit more.
And David.
I know that if the two of you work together, then hopefully moving forward, we won't have this problem again. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So everyone have a good evening and we wish everyone a good first day of school tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.